Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the April 10, 2019 Select Board meeting. I will call this meeting to order. And the first thing on our agenda tonight will be the reorganization of the Select Board. Congratulations to those that have been reelected. And would someone like to make a motion?
I would like to nominate, but before I do so, want to thank our current Chair for her service over the past year.
It's me. Oh, okay. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Appreciate that. Your leadership.
Thank you.
And so I would like to nominate Christian Stanley for the Chair and David Phil for the Clerk position if they're willing to accept.
I'll second Christian.
I'll second both of you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Congratulations.
Did you want to?
No. The other way around, I was going to say, but that's fine.
Are you good?
Yeah, yeah.
All right. So we have a new Chair, Christian Stanley. Congratulations. And David Phil is our Clerk. Thank you.
Good news is there are two more bites at the apple.
Yeah, thank you.
We're here for you. All right.
All right. So I guess just thank you. And just a few things I wanted to say about being Chair, if I can. One thing is I was hoping that we could all sign a Code of Conduct that we were presented with last year at next week's meeting, bring that up on the agenda. I also have presented a schedule in the past that I'd like to stick to, and I'm happy to share that with you guys now or at a future time, but just to kind of stick to a rough schedule throughout the year. And then a few things I'd like to do over this term is establish a committee to review our form of government and provide a recommendation for our next annual town meeting. Like to establish some form of committee focused on climate change and like to see if we can get people to sign on at the upcoming town meeting. We've talked before about establishing a civility and inclusion committee that I'd like to spearhead as well. Also, just looking into economic development is another committee we could possibly establish to look at opportunities in Hadley for developing our economic outlets. And then possibly as well work on updating some of our town bylaws and incorporate that into a senior tax work-off program. But all those will come, and also all the great projects that we're doing, the Senior Center, the fire substation, and the library projects. So a lot to go through in the next year.
Okay, just on the Code of Conduct.
Yeah.
Can I suggest maybe that it might take two meetings because if memory serves me correctly, when we talked about it last time, I think there were a couple of talking points that people wanted to modify.
And I think we should go through those, and I think we should sign it.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah. Good?
Yeah, I just don't know that we can do it in the next.
Okay.
That's something we need to discuss in the next meeting.
So let's bring it up next meeting, and then we can go from there.
We might have to, like, when town meeting is over, which is the first weekend in May, that we can dive into these ambitious things that you.
Yeah, and all these things are coming up right now. We're on town meeting and planning for it.
Well, it's good to get it out there so that people, if they want to join the committee.
Yeah, I wanted to kind of get some things out before town meeting and hopefully even say some things at town meeting regarding those things, so.
Sure.
All right. And we can just move into the consent agenda. We have warrants, API 1935, reissue AP 1940, AP 1940 S. We have a service zone plan. The Fire Chief presents the amended ambulance service zone plan to incorporate a part of UMass. A DLTA grant, affordable housing. Borable signed commitment letter to participate with PVPC on implementing the DLTA grant to study affordable housing. Recreational boating safety and law enforcement. Police Chief provide an update to the town's boating, safety, and law enforcement. Do you guys want to speak to that after we take the vote, or?
If you'd like to pull them off, and we'll give you just a brief description of there's, you know, it doesn't require any action on the first, but on the second, the late fees, I believe that requires action.
Okay. So we'll take those off?
Yeah, and then we'll take off the also late fees for private duty detail vendors. Police Chief presents his recommended late fee schedule for private duty detail vendors.
So does Mike? That's what I was going to ask. I'll say.
Oh, yeah.
Give it an hour.
So was the Fire Chief coming in to do?
I hopped into his office right before I came over here. He was sending out the code red message.
Yeah, he's sending out a pool of water. You gotta make that announcement, and he was gonna be right behind me, but I'm not sure exactly where he is.
Okay, if he comes in, then we can have him address it. Oh, sorry.
Yeah.
Give me a kick.
If he comes in, we can address it. No, this is good. You can feed me. No, that sounds good. So do we want to set it aside, or do we want to take a vote on that now?
I'd like to hear what it is.
Okay, so let's wait.
Okay, so I'll make a motion that we accept on the consent agenda, the warrants and the DLTA grant for affordable housing.
Second.
Take a vote.
All those in favor?
All those in favor. Thank you. Sorry. Sorry. I'll get it.
Aye.
Aye. All right.
You got a big problem with her and I both.
I know, on either side. This is like. Who's kicking who? Okay. And so would you like to speak to those?
Sure. I'll do the first part, and Lieutenant will explain later about the late fees. That's the one that requires some action on the fourth part. Just really quickly to give you a little background and just kind of a reminder about the boating, safety, and law enforcement article, or the issue here. About two years ago, we were approached by Massachusetts Environmental Police, and they requested some assistance from us to try to help them with some of the issues they're dealing with on the water. They just don't have the personnel to do what it is that they need to be doing up and down the Connecticut River Valley in this general area. There was some private money involved from, I believe, who goes the 5K?
Kestrel.
Kestrel. And they, we kind of gathered area departments together, as well as the Mass Environmental Police, and they were trying to put something together to kind of pay officers from each agency to help them out. I think they kind of realized the amount of money that may be involved, and the project really kind of fell flat. In the interim, over the course of the last about year and a half, we were approached by several people in our area in Hadley, and we got a lot of complaints about Mitch's Island and the river in general with a lot of the, you know, there was criminal element up and down the waterways, and Mitch's Island itself was becoming, you know, kind of untenable. People just didn't want to go take their families there. So we kind of realized that something needed to happen, and it wasn't going to be able to be funded privately. So I approached the East Hampton Police Chief, and we reached out to several of our area partners, including Mass Environmental Police, the US Coast Guard, DCR, and some other entities, and we formed the Connecticut River Task Force. For one summer, it was kind of a practice, so to speak. We worked together jointly to kind of address some of the complaints and some of the problems that we're getting up and down the river in all of those cities and towns, North Hampton, Holyoke, South Hadley, East Hampton, and Hadley. And I feel like we made some really good strides the first year. Over the course of this last year, we brought in the District Attorney's Office to help us with some of the legal issues that we were dealing with, and the final part was essentially assigning all of our officers and training the ones who are interested in it to be able to have the legal authority to do the things on the water that they can do on land. And I simply wanted to put together this paperwork. I sent, you know, some of our past press releases to Jennifer, and she kindly posted them on the agenda for anyone to take a look at. And I just wanted, I thought it was important for people to know we're kind of proud of what we're doing out there. I think we're making a difference on the water, and I just want to let folks know and let the board know that we're going into our second year of this, and these are the things that we're going to be doing, just to try to make the waterway a safer place.
So no jurisdictional issues? You guys have that all worked out?
We have it all worked out. That was all part of the process. That's why we got the District Attorney's Office involved, and our Western Mass Mutual Aid Agreement covers waterways as well.
That's what I was just going to ask, a mutual aid. Yeah, thank you.
Will you have an officer out there on the water on a regular basis?
No, it won't be anything like that. It's simply, it's simply, the law, Chapter 90B, Section 12, requires that we make the assignment. So essentially, I assign officers to have the authority to do this, and most, for the most part, it will be task force oriented. So they'll pick certain really busy weekends where they have issues out on the water, on the island, things like that, and we'll have officers working with other jurisdictions. It'll save on spending because we'll have, you know, other officers from other towns helping us in Hadley, and we will reciprocate in that manner. So it's not going to be a boat patrol or anything like that. It'll just be as necessary.
Will it be fire departments helping you also, or is it emergency services?
Fire department has offered up their boat in the time of need. We've used it in the past, but the task force has actually acquired a boat. It'll be stored and housed in, yeah, East Hampton PD, but we will use, you know, the fire department's boat, as well as their medics and EMTs when necessary. Quite often, we get called out to the island to deal with injuries and things like that, so we do work together with them as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Second.
Third. All those in favor?
Aye.
And then the other, the permits or late fees?
Late fees. So for the police detail late fees, we're suggesting that the town implement a late fee on our police detail billing. As you all know, we have a $21,000 slush fund, which allows for our officers to be paid in the time from which they work until the time which the contractor pays. So the officer gets paid, and then eventually down the road, that invoice comes in and replenishes the town, the money the town has provided to us. We have come to a point in time now where our police details, we're very busy with them. And we've done a number of things within the agency. We've improved our invoice. We've improved our internal processes. And right now, we're setting up with the town, working with the Treasurer's Office to also come on with online bill pay. And that will be one of the things that we will suggest that our vendors undertake as well. So the police detail billing, this 5% police detail bill late payment, we're hoping that it will just motivate our vendors to pay in a quicker manner. And essentially, Lauren reaches out to our vendors, and she asks for them to pay the bill, and it's basically, pay the bill or I'm going to ask you again. And that's really kind of the end of it. So now with this 5% fee that we're suggesting on top of the police detail invoice, we're hoping that when Lauren now calls and she says, can you pay the bill, please? Otherwise, we're going to implement this 5% fee. You can go online, you can pay the bill right now through our, through our online bill pay. We're hoping that it will just expedite the process along.
Do you have a frequent offender, a group of frequent offenders that are always late, or is it just kind of scattered?
It's a scatter. I mean, we work for Verizon and Eversource very frequently, so it's just, it's just over such a long period of time that we're invoicing them over and over and over again. The same thing with the university, when we're working for, at the Mullins Center, working for, at the, at the Stadia. It's just, there's just a lot of them, so.
So the extra money that we're, have in for a article, we're hoping to increase that amount at town meeting?
Yes, correct. So the article on, for town meeting, I believe, is to bring us up to a $40,000 slush fund. And it's basically, that money is just, it's a revolving account. And right now, in addition to what our police detail billing, the town also collects a 10% administrative fee on the bill, on the billing. So by improving our processes and increasing our slush fund, not only will it pay our officers faster, but it will also motivate our officers to continue to take the details. If we outsource our details to state police or to other agencies, they collect the administrative fee.
Do you know if other towns do this 5%? Like, is it something that's proven to be successful? Just because of my experience, that kind of thing is tricky sometimes.
We're going to be a litmus test.
Okay.
So is there an MGL or anything like that that caps the amount of the late fee? Linda, do you know of any?
I don't know. And I'm not sure, can I be, have it clearer? Is it 5%, a one-time 5%? Or is it something, or like each month, or?
I only just threw up the 5% as a suggestion.
As a one-time?
As a suggestion, whether it can be one-time or whether it can be on the monthly, that's up to, that's up to the board, I believe, to implement that.
I would just say, I'd like to see actually more than 5% if, especially after 30 days, if there's no cap under the law on what we can charge. I'd like to see, you know, a 10 or 15% late fee, and that way our officers are getting paid, and we're not having to use that revolving fund all the time.
30 days, 5%. 60 days, 10%. 90 days, 15%.
Generally speaking, a lot of our bylaws where we have fines and fees like that, as you step up in subsequent offenses, the fine does go up, so.
It's tough under contract, too, a lot of these. They're not getting the money for contracts when they start the big construction jobs, but.
But that should be our officer problem.
The basic Eversource and Verizon should, should move their papers along a little bit quicker than that.
Yeah, I mean, we're helped. Almost every contractor that we, you know, when I get invoices, it's always net 30, so no one hesitates to hold us to that.
Right.
So the Select Board can grant this late fee under Mass General Law, Chapter 40, Section 22F. It doesn't specify a cap. There is a cap that's established by court decision, and the principle is that we can't charge more than what it costs us to administer. So certainly, a 5% cap, a 5% late fee is reasonable. 10% is probably reasonable as well, but I think once you get higher than 10%, you may find yourself having a harder time justifying that higher amount because it may not match up with your expenses for having to deal with officers who are being paid late.
So could we have a escalating one? At 45 days, it's 5%. At 60 days, it's 10%?
Yeah, you can, you can do that.
I'm hopeful that this is just a tool that we will use to say to the contractor, please pay or we'll implement. I'm hoping it's something that we rarely have to use. So in that case, I would rather go with a higher fee that's more threatening, so to speak, and encourages them to pay up in a timely manner, you know, and hopefully we never have to slap it on.
I would just say have it at 45 days instead of 30. You know, if you did 30, most people are used to paying 30, but if you did a little bit over that.
With a higher fee?
What's kind of the, those that are late, how long are they taking to pay even when they are late? Is it 60 days, 90 days? What are you kind of looking at?
Yeah, usually 60 days.
There are some longer.
Yes.
So how about 10% at 45 days?
Yeah.
David, you mentioned that you can't, you can't charge more than the administrative charge, meaning the 10% that we, that the town gets in the general fund for each detail? We can't charge more than that?
Your, your actual expenses associated with.
So that would be, that would be the expense.
Yeah, yeah.
So we couldn't go more than 10, and the 10% admin fee for all the details goes into the general fund, which is essentially, you know, kind of the way to pay back the town for the slush fund. Late fees, we do the same thing.
I kind of disagree with the data. It's not really a fee. It's a percentage on the money of the bill. It's, it's not really a fee. It's a percentage on the money. Oh.
Well, I think 10% is still reasonable because we're having the, the Treasurer's going to be having to pay the officers out of the revolving fund in the meantime, take her time. You guys are, Lauren's using her administrative time to track these people down, so I don't think 10% is unreasonable.
Especially at 45, you know, then you're asking at that point, we have to reissue bills and all kinds of things.
Start somewhere. And then we can always readdress it.
So can I?
Make a motion.
Yeah, can I make a motion to amend the proposed late fee to 10% at 45 days net?
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor?
So do we know, was Mike planning on coming to talk about?
Yeah, so I talked to him about 4 o'clock this afternoon. I didn't plan to be here.
I just texted.
Okay.
Do, we can hold this and bring it up again later. Give him some time.
I'll let you know.
And so move into public comment?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
I got a few things I want to ask. First of all, did the Select Board order the Hadley Police to stand guard at the April 2 Planning Board meeting? And what was the reason for it? And I want to know, as a taxpayer, what did that cost us?
Public comments.
Yeah.
Is there an answer?
We can take it under advisement.
Will there ever be an answer?
Just for the record, I think the Chief of Police answered your question.
No, I got two conflicting answers.
We're not going to talk about it. We're not going to talk about it right now. It's just public comment.
Well, I know, but is there, is there somewhere along the line that's going to be an answer to that question?
I don't see any reason if you ask the Police Chief.
No, I got two, I said I got two conflicting answers to it, so I'm asking you that, the Select Board.
We can take it under advisement, and we can look into it.
Okay. I expect an answer to that. Then I made a, a public request with the town administrator on April 3. The response on April 8 from the town administrator was, this was to do with public records request for Phil Palumbo resume, resume and certificates. And the, this was written back to me, Dear Mr. Michkowski, the town of Hadley received your request for public records dated April 3, 2019 concerning documents associated with Mr. Phil Palumbo, specifically his resume and qualifications and education certificates. Please be advised that a search of our records, Mr. Phil Palumbo revealed no documents related to the requested information. The information that you request does not exist in the Select Board files and therefore not falls under the definition of public records. Now, the problem I have with that is under, under the Commonwealth of Mass, under owner's project manager guidelines, Mass General Law, Chapter 149, Section 44A and a half, the state strongly recommends that, I'm going to read this here to you. And the reason I'm doing this is because I feel this guy is costing this town a lot of money. And it says right in here, under their guidelines, awarding authorities should carefully review the OPM's applicants to ensure they have significant relevant experience in the supervision and construction of the type of complexity necessary for the project. It is critical that the selected OPM be identified as an individual within a firm and that the individual meets and preferably exceeds the minimum qualification. So my question is, if you never got anything on them, how did you appoint someone that may be not even qualified? And I'm going to refer back to what happened with the Senior Center not following the zoning laws and coming in for change orders. You hired us, and the state wants you to have an OPM, so.
We have your point. Thank you.
So you follow the.
Phil Palumbo works for Collier's.
I want to explain it, Mr. Chairman.
Collier's is the contractor.
What?
We've hired them, him to be our OPM. They're a respectable contractor. They met all our criteria at the time. We've made that decision.
But nowhere, Mr. Chairman, nowhere in his application from Collier did Mr. Palumbo, anything was talked about his or his resume. Okay?
That's not necessary.
And then also, I, I want to continue. I want to notify the ex-chairman that I filed a formal complaint to the State Ethics Commission against Joyce Youngwell Chairman for the abuse of ethics code. And also, I filed with the town clerk and also the Board of Selectment. And I hope you guys take action on, on, on her reaction like you did to Donald Pep. All right? And then I want to advise the Board that we're going to file a political group called Citizens for Responsibilities and Accountabilities and the rights of all residents, landowners, business owners of the town of Hadley. And then finally, your comment period, we have, we have a walk-in, well, on a Planning Board, we had a walk-in that people could come in, ask any questions they wanted. But here, you come in here, you ask a question, you got a comment hour, and you never get an answer on it. So what is the sense of even asking a question? I think to be fair with the citizens and taxpayers of the town, if a citizen is good enough to come forth in a public meeting, ask a question, you guys should at least respect that and answer the question.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
Sometimes we don't have the answer, and we need to research it though, so.
You never have the answer, seems to me.
Any other comments?
I'd like to comment to the audience that if you're trying to reach the Senior Center, there's been a problem with getting our telephone moved to our new location. Please call the old number, 586-4023, and leave a message. We check that answering machine quite frequently during the day, and that's the only way you can reach us at the moment. Hopefully, by next, I think it's 16, we'll have service.
Or stop in.
Or stop in and see our new facility. It's very pleasant. No elevator. You'll love it.
Any other public comments? I see the Fire Chief has walked in. Would you like to go over the service zone plan?
So basically, this is required as part of the new ambulance service. So it's a, it's a rewrite of our service zone plan that goes through basically everything having to do with our, our service that we're providing to the townspeople, and it's a very long document.
Yeah.
There's a very large addendum to it, but it basically has all of our mutual aid agreements, as are the list of requirements of what we have to have signed off from the doctor at the hospital, just everything across the board in order to operate. So this is the first step to have you sign off on it, then it goes to the region to be approved by the region, and then they'll, usually they ship back comments on potential updates or changes that we might need to do to it. And then this is, this becomes a living document until we have to amend it. For example, we also have our, our basic EMT plan in here as well, so if we down the road decide to have our own basic ambulance, we're starting that process with having that in place as well.
Does this need our signature?
I just need the Chair's signature, so.
Oh, you missed it.
Do we need a vote? Make a motion to approve? Do we need a vote on that?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Okay, and then Jennifer just asked if we could do the annual report dedication real quick. Is that, you want to?
Yes. So we did a call out for volunteer, or not volunteers, excuse me, people for the dedication of the annual report and Fred Oakley Volunteer Award. There are four people on the list that I provided to all, the Hadley Mothers Club, Leona Tramura, Dennis Mann, which would be in memoriam, and Ed DuKevitz. And everybody who nominated these four people in organization felt that they could really, truly receive either one. So nobody was nominating just for the Fred Oakley, and nobody nominated just for the dedication. And those are the four people. I know a little bit about.
I'm sorry, I missed the first, so I heard.
The Hadley Mothers Club.
Oh, the Mothers Club itself, I guess.
Yes. It's the whole, the whole organization. It's their seven. It's their 75th anniversary and so they were put out there as a, as a nomination. I did do some research. They have not received it in any of the annual reports that I was able to find.
And so again, Jennifer, so the Fred Oakley Award is really a volunteerism award.
Yes.
Right, and then the first one is the dedication.
Of the annual report.
Right, and for whatever criteria.
Which is, yes.
Okay. Does anybody have any connection?
I'll make a motion to the annual report dedication to the Hadley Mothers Club since this is their 75th year. And they have certainly benefited the whole town from school to seniors to everybody, to the town employees. So I, this would be a nice year to do that for them.
Okay, any other discussion?
Not really, but the Oakley Awards, the volunteer award.
Go ahead and finish this one first.
Yeah, do we want to do the dedication first and then move on to?
Well, I would think the Mothers Club maybe should get the Fred Oakley, not the town report.
I was wondering about that too, just because it's a volunteer award.
So again, Mothers, Mothers Club.
Then an individual that devoted their whole life to the town that you would nominate.
Leona Shemura and Ed DuKevitz.
You know, I, I just look at the longest period of time that you would nominate somebody for the annual report for someone that devoted their whole life to the town, you know?
Well, 75 years is a long time.
Yeah, but it's, it's an organization, not an individual.
I think that's because there's so many town residents that belong to it.
That belong to it.
Yeah.
It's kind of nice because it's all in common.
It's a tough call either way. I understand.
It is.
So would any of these people fit the criteria for the Fred Oakley Award? If we dedicated the annual report to the Mothers Club, would any of these others fit the?
Certainly. I mean Dennis Mann for sure.
Right.
You know, he was a member of the Friends of the Library and Library Building Committee. Very active member. He was a huge loss.
Leona Shemura, as I understand, is very active as part of the after-school program. And she also is very active in her church and volunteers there. And so the person who nominated her was sort of saying, you know, she doesn't necessarily do just town events, but she's very active in the town and the children do love her. And so that was why she was nominated. And Ed DuKevitz was nominated because he was, if, if somebody in the.
Deputy Chief.
He.
Assistant Chief.
Assistant Chief.
And I believe he was the first paramedic, volunteer paramedic in the town, is that correct?
Yeah, first EMT.
First EMT in the town. And he has a history of service to the town, as I understand. And those were, that's why they were nominated.
How many years did Eddie have?
I don't remember offhand a lot.
I am. That's what I'm saying. Somebody that devoted their whole life to the fire association and volunteer fire department is, is pretty big.
Well, there's a motion on the table for the Mothers Club to receive the dedication.
Well, there's not saying that, and we have done in the past.
Done multiple.
We've done multiples. So we could dedicate the, since we have four, we could do two and two.
Two and two.
Certainly, I don't want to slight anybody because it's, it's very nice that people do volunteer and donate their time. So if someone would like to pick some, do you want to pick somebody else or shall we, who else would like to go for the?
The other thing I was, we had talked at one point about for the dedication of having a town employee and a resident vote. Because the, you know, typically people are only nominated the year after they've passed away or, you know, after they've been long out of service for the town. So as kind of a recognition to a current town employee, we were going to maybe think about doing both. So do, I mean, do you want to hold, hold off on that for until a future year or do we want to?
Well, I think, I think the current town employee, anyway, we didn't really talk about, I, I'm reluctant to do somebody who's actually on the payroll. And, and the reason being, I, I think it can become, it could become problematic in the workplace, you know, where people start worrying about, well, why was so-and-so recognized? You know what I mean?
Yeah.
I'd rather stay away from that. I, I'm more than happy to recognize long-term municipal employees like Ed and Leona would fall in that category who.
Have retired.
But they're retired now, so.
Correct, as we did with Eddie for.
Exactly.
It was after he, he retired.
And I think we did too.
I'd just like to not see it only after people.
I want the Mothers Club and Eddie for the report and then the other two for the Fred Oakley.
Certainly. That's kind of what I was thinking too, yeah.
You know, without the volunteers and the people that devoted their lives to this town, we wouldn't be here right now, you know?
Yeah, for sure.
You really got to recognize them.
Yeah.
Absolutely, we're not arguing that.
Do you want to modify your motion?
Certainly. I'll make a motion to, for the dedication of the report to the Hadley Mothers Club and to Ed DuKevitz.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And make a motion for the Fred Oakley?
Yeah, make a motion that we dedicate this year's Fred Oakley Award to both Leona Shemura and in memoriam to Dennis Mann.
Second. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you, Jennifer.
Thank you for taking me out on order.
And then we can get right into budget discussion. We are talking about the 700 budget series for debt, the state assessment 800 budget series, and unclassified benefits 900 budget series.
So this all starts on page 81.
Thank you. Thank you.
Hi, second. You're all set, yeah, thank you.
I can start on the 700, with 710 and 750, which are the debt and interest schedules. This budget looks a little different the way we've laid it out this year because if you look at the prior years, '17 and '18 and '19, how it's been done in the past, we have a single line for all of the principal and a single line item for all of the interest. Because we're trying to track very carefully the amount that is subject to the debt exclusion and keeping in mind that we have a cap on what we're trying to spend on that account based on promises made to the taxpayer. We have set out line items separately for the principal, for a long-term debt, interest for long-term debt, for the debt that is subject to debt exclusion, a separate set of figures for within the levy. We're also trying to use the within the levy figure as a planning tool now as the capital planning committee is going to be deciding on which items are going to go and be funded within the levy. The difference between those two, for, just to explain, is when we borrow and pay off within the levy, that is a regular budget line item, just like any other department, just like anything else that we're funding out of taxation. That is already being raised. When the debt is paid out of, subject to debt exclusion, that means we are raising the extra money to pay that debt amount, that taxes are being raised, that extra amount. And that extra amount is going directly to pay the, the debt. So the, the goal for us each year now is, right now, the debt excluded, if we keep that amount at $1,107 million for the debt exclusion, debt and interest, that is the prior debt exclusion, debt and interest, plus the amount that we're spending on the buildings. And then when people, when the town passes other overrides, such as they, they do pretty much every year on other items, that would be in addition to those. So we'd be, so we're raising even more money to cover those additional amounts. So this year, the amount for debt excluded is $1,207,736, which is about $100,000 above the floor to cover the items that we purchased, we borrowed for, and they're going to be paid off in five years. And then those will come, then that amount will go down and, or be offset by other borrowings. The amount within the levy that we're borrowing right now or that we're paying off each year is, this year, $177,533. So the way this will appear in the finance committee's budget, it will still be set out as the principal figure and the interest figure. But for your purposes and for our purposes now, the accountant set up several more line items within those budgets so that we can differentiate those items and be able to, I don't know if that helps explain it better, but hopefully in time, that's, that's the point of it. So those are the figures and the total debt and interest is $1,385,269. Any questions?
So basically, the long-term debt, those are the bonds, correct?
Long-term debt or bonds, that's, yes, that's the further breakdown between those.
And short-term is the things.
The bonds are long-term and the short-term are the bands, which are one year or less right now. And we haven't actually done a bond since 2014. We have our first bond for the new buildings happening in June this year, where we have some of the preliminary bands, the brands that did preliminary borrowings for these buildings will be coming due and get rolled into a bond plus with also new borrowings for the purpose. Because we're doing a lot of construction and the money will be spent pretty much over the next year. And then after June, any more borrowing will be through other bands and another year and a half in January of 21 will be the second bond to cover it. And then we'll, then we'll be, we'll be settled. And from then on, we're hoping that the bands will continue to be used for these smaller items and will then differentiate what's going to be subject to debt exclusion. We're hoping that through the capital planning committee that those will be the larger items. And then the smaller items, we're not going to, we'll be able to continue to pay off through the budget and not put a lot of bussy smaller items on a ballot to go and be voted. So the people are voting for things, hopefully, you know, for example, $100,000 and up, you'll go and vote a debt exclusion override. But if we're spending $10,000, $20,000 on something, we're just going to borrow it and we're going to pay it off within this budget.
And Mandy, you made a, a good point, I think, that there's repeating and repeating at the department head meeting today. Just seems to continue to be some confusion about, you know, when you have an expanded building project, you know, that, that spans over a multi-year period, the, the debt associated with that has really already been accounted for. And, and a lot of people are confused. It makes sense, I mean, because they think about it like a home equity loan where, oh, I took a little bit, but then when I go back, I'm going to have to pay more interest because I just took another tranche off my home equity loan. And it, it doesn't work that way.
Right.
Everything's already built in.
Right, especially since, I'm sure people could be looking at this bond and the next bond that we're probably looking at another $10 million in borrowing. How are we going to pay for that? We've already actually budgeted that. When we looked at the original budgeting for planning for these three buildings, we actually used, as, as you put it out, I think we used a 5% or, is it 3%?
3%?
Yeah, we did 5% interest projected, and we've been getting the borrowing in less than that. So we projected an interest rate and payment and right from then, in order to keep the payments even over the years, by increasing the, the debt exclusion payments by $285,500 a year, that is the translation of the $95 per household, per average.
Average house.
House, the $95 increase over the prior year's debt and, and interest payments, the debt exclusion payments. And we started that right away. So the, the debt and exclusion budget went up right away, that $285,500 in fiscal '18. And it's the same amount in '19, it's the same amount in '20. That's how much we're paying off over almost $300,000 a year already on those borrowings. So in three years, we've got almost $1 million paid off by the time we borrowing the next amount. So that is the amount it's going to stay at. We're not going to be borrowing, oh, we're going to be borrowing more, but the payment schedule is going to, is already set on those. Now people are, we're still going to be voting for borrow, for, you know, police cars, fire engines and DPW trucks. That will be over and above, but we have already quantified the borrowing for these buildings. It's accounted for. That increase has already happened and we're going to stay steady over the however many years it takes us to pay that off.
Oh, go ahead. I was going to say, like you mentioned in the department head meeting, there's some confusion about, you know, where increases are coming from. So is it possible to maybe twice a year after annual town meeting and then special town meeting, based on the results of town meeting votes, to publish some sort of document that says, okay, these items were approved at town meeting and as a result, the tax rate's going to go up this total amount? And that way we can push it out there to the public.
Right.
And they can see that, okay, town meeting has, you know, consequences. So either show up or, you know what I mean?
Well, that's, that's exactly right because the, the new things that we have borrowed for since we accounted for the buildings.
Right.
I take that, I put it over five years, I know what the interest rate is.
Right.
And that's, accounts for that additional $100,000 in that budget right now. So we bought about $500,000 worth of other items. And it's not just vehicles, I think some of the.
The refrigeration for the school.
Yeah, there are some, the HVACs, the HVAC for both of the, the school and the, so there's, those are good, you know, items that we're putting in there and buying as well, so.
I just think it gets lost in translation for people that don't go to the movies and don't watch consistently. They just see the tax rate go up and then they don't have any idea where it's coming from, so they assume that it's coming from the library or the senior center.
And they say, and then they'll say, we, we have more to go. We still haven't borrowed the rest of this, so it's going to go up even more. So yes.
And then if it doesn't go to ballot and it's not debt exclusion, then that throws another range into the.
So I guess that's why I started trying to sort of, to itemize this out in here, at least so that it's, it's available. I think it's still difficult to explain and understand. And that's, I think, I'm trying to struggle with, how can I, yes, if there's some kind of presentation, I can do the right kind of draft.
What if we do just like a book slip in the bill?
Yeah, so that means just like a summary of what's changed in the tax rate or what's changed in the debt for the town.
Yeah, voted at town meeting, you could have dollar figure and then, you know, the cost per.
But each year we have things that come off too.
We do.
You know, so they'll be aware so that to see if it would show them how it balances, you know? Then they would maybe understand it.
And that's a good point, Joyce, because when people want to know how much this is going to cost and you get the answer out of, you know, us or the assessors office and they see how much is going to increase the tax rate, it's not necessarily an increase in that amount at all. It might be completely absorbed by something going off. So it seems to me people would be more interested in what the net increase is than what each one's going to cost. I'm not sure about that, but that seems to be, if that makes sense to me, when I know what my bill was this year, how is it going to compare next year? And when you're voting on something and all you hear about is the increases, that might make a difference knowing, but, you know, but we've, we just finished off paying a number of other vehicles and so this is actually going to be neutral from one year to the next, even though of course these items cost. We never mean to say this isn't going to cost you anything. It is. It's just not necessarily going to increase what we're raising from you this year. So I am really working to try, I want to work to try and come up with a better way of presenting this. David and I were at a presentation a few weeks ago about how some of the other towns are, are doing just this kind of thing. And we've gotten in some, some capital debt planning spreadsheets and ideas from some other towns, so.
Just some sort of click notes version for people, you know, once or twice a year so they can basically see where their tax rates.
Sure. Sure, something at, at select board meeting, or, or not.
Some publishable.
Yeah, something we can send out, post on the website, something like that.
Okay, something writing.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, something writing. Okay.
I was going to see if the finance committee had any questions.
Yeah, I, I, approximately, what's the outstanding balance of what happened by, I mean, what's, what's our. I mean, what's, what's our?
What do we have outstanding right now? It was eight we just borrowed. I think we probably have, after March, we probably have about 12 million outstanding right now. We're going to be borrowing another four in June on top of that. Ultimately, with the buildings, we'll be up at about 12 million dollars for the buildings, and then we're going to have the others, we'll be a smaller term borrowing. I can, I can give you those capital items.
Is it 12 and four, or 12, four and 12? 12 and four, you're saying, or an additional 12?
Oh, not an additional 12.
Oh.
Okay, no, it's, well, we had a lot of borrowing, which isn't really funny, that's our old borrowing, which is.
Yeah.
That's where we started with 8 million. Yeah, we started with 8 million, and then also, yes, we borrowed another four towards our new projects.
Right.
And so, and which will be about 12, so I guess we're going to be heading up towards 20 million dollars, considering too, that we're paying off a million a year, so we're never really going to get up to that. And with lower interest rates, most of that 1.2 million will be going into payment, paying it down.
I mean, that sort of tells the whole story, though, right? Like, because you know what's outstanding.
And that's another way, that certainly is another graph or another part of what, I was looking for, another part of the explanation that would be useful.
People can see it.
Yeah, we always, we do file, you know, show how much is outstanding in what has been borrowed, but that's only part of the picture if you have authorized borrowing, which you haven't done yet. And for the last couple of years, we've been very lopsided towards our author, what we've borrowed is a lot less than our authorized borrowing. Our authorized would be 14, and we had eight outstanding. So, but we're going to, we're going to catch up to that, because we're, because we're doing these buildings, we're going to, our actual borrowing will, will be much closer to our authorized borrowing in about another year. So, but that's a, that's a part of it too, to show the balances and what it is. So, yeah, I would, I'd love to work with Finance Committee and let, get some back and forth about how, what is a good way to present it. I'm sure we'd all have some good ideas on that one, too.
We also talked about one time is, I'm trying to remember to get this right, in capital, we talked about maybe putting more in towards this and paying down a little bit more.
Right.
So that way, we, when capital comes up, we could, have you thought anymore about that? You know what I'm talking about, remember that?
Less, that we can purchase things without as much borrowing.
Right.
And that's where, I think, where we're trying to get there, because that's been hard to have, to find out where we have an extra few thousand, few hundred thousand dollars to put into a capital account and then spend it. What we're actually doing is, we looked at the borrowing within the levy, which we discovered about a year ago, was coming down very rapidly. But rather than, again, rather than have the budget go right down and have it go up again, we're working to try and keep it up at that level. So we were, what do we have this year, 177,000. Two years ago, it was, I think, 150,000. So we've been trying to step that up each year. And if we could have a leap in that area, you know, if you could make that be 250, 300,000 to cover our capital, we would be really close to having, to matching what we're actually spending in that year. The more that we can put in it, the more it would be spending, and then we would have less going into interest. The advantage of doing it through borrowing within the levy is that we're, we can keep the payments even from year to year, because every, the capital purchasing from year to year will be like this. But if we borrow each of those items for a year at a low interest rate, we're paying it off, we can make sure we're keeping it at 200,000 year to year, and that will come to us. So that's, that's part of the planning I'd like to see us do, too. And if we could increase that, it's great. So what I've been doing is just kind of inching it up each year as everybody else's budget inches up.
Okay.
So we'll get it up a little bit, but we haven't been able to manage a leap, but.
You know, for the vehicles and stuff like that, I know we talked about the short term, because by the time, if you took a 10-year loan out on a vehicle, it, it's not going to be worth anything in the first place, anyway, and we're paying that debt and interest on that loan, you know?
Right.
It just didn't add up.
Yeah, I'll tell you, it's really rewarding to get things paid off in a short period of time. You just, and then, and then you're ready to buy something new. It actually feels, I know that when we started doing the band payments in that way, like with borrowing, the band being bond anticipation note, which is the short-term borrowing, and then when it came time, when it came due, doing a lump sum rollover and saying, instead of paying one-fifth or one-tenth of everything, it's like, this year, we got the backhoe taken care of, and then this year, we took care of the dump truck and a police cruiser.
Yeah, long-term principal and debt, you can always plan on, and that's steady all the times.
We're only putting, at this point, we're only putting those larger capital items into bonds. The rest are going to stay in those short-term notes, and we're going to get them paid off, and then we can, and borrow and pay off again. I think that's going to be a more satisfying way going into our future. And then if we keep those, if we keep only the larger, the really large projects in the bonds, we're going to be able to predict their, their going down over time a little bit differently and plan our next buildings, whether it's in five, 10, 15, 20 years, you can see where your next building is going to fit in, and without, you know, a big leap. That's what we're trying to do, is keep some steadiness, keep some predictability in here, and even payments over time, so.
Okay, thank you, yeah. Any other questions, or Finance Committee?
One second.
Yeah, yeah, all right. Thank you, Linda, for helping. I know that's a lot of number crunching, so thank you for all that.
Sure.
And then, do we want to go to the 900 series now, since it's right here, and then go to the 800, or do we want to do the 800 first?
Good, 900, because it's all.
Okay.
900s. Where do we start with, Joan?
Oh, it's retirement.
Retirement? All right, retirement is something we get a letter each year. This, this is one of those, it is what it is. We get a letter in November saying what the payment is as of the following year, so we'll know exactly what to budget. We get two options each year. One is a lump sum if you pay it all on July 1, and this year, that amount is 1,271,770 if we pay it all on July 1, which we have been doing for years. But just, again, to show, I guess, our financial health and how some of what we're doing is working here, the other choice is to pay on July 1 and January 1 of next year, two payments, each payment being 647,306.50. The difference between making those two payments and making the one payment is 22,843. So by having enough money in the bank or having enough liquidity as we start our year, we're able to save almost 23,000 just being, by being able to make that payment. And that was true when I came here, and I don't know if we've ever made the two payments, Joan, but that's but something.
We've been able to make the one payment achieve.
So, so I'm, I'm really happy we've been able to continue that, so. And what's our next one?
Workers' comp. Data, especially, I figure you'd come up with, workers' comp.
Workers' comp, so back in, it's January, when I put this together, estimated that we would have to increase workers' comp by 1,500. That looks a little light now. We probably should up that by, what, 12, 12,000, did you say?
I don't know.
For workers' comp, a shortfall?
No, I don't see any kind of a shortfall on workers' comp.
I'm thinking about unemployment, sorry.
Yeah.
So this is, this is an estimate that I got from Maya, so the increase there is 1,500.
Out from one year to the next.
Yeah.
Because we get that through Maya.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The next amount on the agenda is the unemployment, which we requested at 33,000. This is, this is a tough one to estimate. We are a reimbursable unit, we pay as we go. So we don't pay in, it says a claim goes in, then we're charged. We can also be charged for someone who has left our employment, gone elsewhere, gotten laid off elsewhere. They go back a year, and if we're reimbursable, we might still get charged for that. So some of these can be unforeseen. I base the estimate on what I know as current claims going into the new fiscal year, and what I anticipate based on if we have long-term temporary employees, we know that we're going to have an unemployment claim for them, and I estimate on that. So that's what I have for this year. We did end up with a shortfall for this year because of what I anticipated.
But that doesn't mean you need to change the budget for next year, is that right?
No, I think the 33,000 going in, and we review it in the fall, and again, for May Town Meeting, to see where we are.
We're already coming out of that hole. We've had some really high monthly ones, and this, this one, who is happy, was only 684, so it, like, yeah, that's good, so hopefully, if we stay that for the rest of the year, we're not going to be going into the hole as much as we were, and then we'll be in a better position for '20.
And Finance Committee, if you guys have anything, just speak up over there.
Health insurance, our rates are not changing, so base, the estimate is based on the activity and enrollment as of January 30, and also adding in and figuring for any known retirements, you have to assume that person's going to retirement, and then the person replacing them having covered. So that is that estimate of 1,368,000. Life insurance, same thing, it's based on the participation and anticipating retirements and additionals as of January 30 for the fiscal year. Medicare, based on anticipated increases to pay, because it's always, right now, 1,450, that's the town share. I think we're in good shape on that this year, as well as the life, so that's 139,000.
Which brings us to OPEB, which, our balance with this year's contribution in that fund is just over 1.4 million. We're doing a really good job, and the fund is doing very well. So we're getting a lot of benefit out of our, the contributions that we make to the OPEB fund. The plan we set in place a few years back was to, I think we started at something about 250,000, and we're increasing it by the 2.5% each year. Maybe we started 260, but, so we have a steady increase of 2.5% over the prior year. So we have budgeted for fiscal '20 at 270,434. I believe it's being funded out of, out of our regular budget this year, and if we, I think it's important, you know, I know there's a lot of other considerations, but I just do want to connect this with our borrowing, our ratings, that we have a review coming up in May for our borrowing in July with standard empires, and this is a factor, is whether we're keeping up with this fund. So I hope we'll be able to do this through our second bond borrowing, too, in a year and a half.
So keeping this fully funded at this budget is pretty key to our borrowing coming up in May.
Yeah, and a key part of it is that we set a plan and we're sticking with the plan. That seems to be as big a factor as anything else, is you've made a plan and you stuck with it. And I thought, that's, that's good, I'm glad we weren't overly ambitious. We had, this is actually, in some ways, a less ambitious plan than the original one set up, but we did that because it was reachable. It was some, it was one that we realized that we could stick to. If you can afford it this year, you can afford probably 2% more the next year. And apparently, that was, we, we luck, that was a good way to go.
Yeah, so the first four years of our borrowing, of our funding strategy was to get to the level where we stopped the bleeding, that we weren't adding to the future liability as we went along. So, once we achieved that, we, we may scale back the increase to 2.5% per year until we hit certain milestones. And under the old accounting rules, Gatsby 45, this year, FY 2020 coming up, this is an important milestone, because now we're on the downslope of paying this off on a more aggressive schedule. Unfortunately, they changed the accounting rules on us, so we need to meet with Parker Elmore and do a check-ins, but this was an important achievement in FY 2020. This was something that we've been working for, for a while.
So it says there's a 7.7 million dollar roughly unfunded liability for OPEB. What was it when we started tackling this problem, like a ballpark number?
I think it was, my best memory was when I jumped in, it was 7.1, and we got it down to 6.3 million, and then the, the increase was due to the change in accounting. So, so all I, you know, it looks like it went up, but it would have gone up even more if we, we had brought it down, so we're starting over.
You're always kind of chasing the red.
Yeah, if you look on page 24, that information about the unfunded liability was, is there with 7.2 in 2008, down to 6.7, oh, 6.8, then 2012, 67.6, 14, about 500,000, less than that, and then another decrease of about 200,000, and then they changed the rules and jumped right back up to 7.7.
I'm mainly interested in the 5,000 that you requested to stabilization, was that to try to reimburse stabilization for?
Is that you, David?
Yeah, that was me.
That was David.
This is a dance we do every year.
I know how that dance goes.
So you thought by putting it in the 900 budget, that we weren't getting noticed? That's about right, yeah.
Sneakily, some game.
Sneakily, see?
Wow.
So one of the goals, you know, obviously, I put it in when putting together the original budget, and the budget didn't balance, so it was one of the easy choices to make to take it out in order to gain 5,000. But we did take 260,000 out of stabilization in order to fund OPEB in FY '19. If, one of the stated goals of this budget is if we have excess free cash in the fall, that we replenish that, that contribution from stabilization. So it's still something that I'm looking for.
And it's still hard to do when other departments are in need of money, and we already have a fairly good amount in stabilization, CPA account is pretty well, well off at this point also. So there's still money out there in our accounts that seem to be quite stable, more so than some of our other departments that need a little bit of cash.
I look forward to the debate.
And we have it every year, don't we?
There's one more line, the police-fire volunteer accident.
Oh, yeah.
Is that?
Next page.
On the next page?
Oh, yeah.
I don't know if that was, it's kind of in an odd spot, so.
So as you know, we, police and fire are not subject to workers' comp, so they need to be covered somehow, so this is where we cover that expense, 45,000, no change from last year, it seems to be in the historical ballpark of what we needed to fund.
So is that an insurance payment, that 45,000, or is that a kind of like a revolving?
Yes, it's an insurance payment.
Okay.
That's good.
Any other, no serious questions? And then skip to the 800 series?
Yeah. The retirement, have you looked forward to the retirees coming down line for that figure?
The retirement, I think, the assessment, it's based, it's based on the salary, so every year in October, we have to give them what is.
Whatever's on the.
The estimate for the total salaries for that year.
Okay.
So in 2018, October of 2018, I provide them with the estimated totals for the entire year, and then they, it's about 26% assessment right now, because of course, they're building up their retirement account.
Yeah.
Kind of how we're doing our OPEB, so it's the same situation for the retirement system.
So that retirement's going to Hampshire County Retirement, too?
Exactly, yes, for the retirees, that will be in the future.
Seven, 800?
800.
800.
800, there are two, two budgets within 800, and the first are the state assessments, these are the charges levied against the town by the state, and it shows up in the cherry sheet. This is water, air pollution assessment, that's our, in order to pay our fair share to a state fund that keeps the air as tidy as possible. PVTA assessment, 204,000, motor vehicle assessment. PVTA assessment, two hundred and four thousand dollars, motor vehicle assessment of three thousand, three hundred and sixty dollars, school choice assessment of four hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars and change, and then our charter school assessment of six hundred and sixty-five thousand and change. These are numbers taken off the governor's cherry sheet, so these numbers will change. We have no control over it. And I'll keep you advised as the budget process goes from the governor to the House to the Senate, the conference committee to the governor, and then any override that may occur at legislative session in July. And then the second budget is the offsets and overlay, again, a lot of this information is derived right off of the cherry sheet. The school choice offset, this is five hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars that goes to the school for their use in education. Library offset gets seventy-seven hundred dollars and that goes towards library programming. And then the overlay, which is the money that the assessors place on the recap sheet in order to cover any shortfalls in tax collections or any abatements, and I reduced the request by ten thousand dollars. And the assessors told me that they're comfortable with that, with that reduction.
Any questions? Finance?
No.
Okay, thank you David. And I think that is everything we were going to review in the budget.
So at your next meeting, we gotta pull it all together, we gotta come up with a review for our budget to work on.
Okay.
In the past, what we've done is.
Thank you.
Thanks, John. And in the past, what we've, we've done at least a couple of times is where we had these discussions with department heads, the finance committee and the select board, we had a list, we had a list of some of the areas that seemed to be in need of possible re.
Just another glance at, if we wanna look back at it.
Well, there've been some people who made a relook, you know, just to see where people have asked for additional monies here or there. Does it make sense to try to pull that together from?
Do we wanna go, I have one list I had kind of noted as we were going through it.
I've been making notes in the, but yeah.
Do we wanna go through that now, or do we wanna do that at next meeting? But we have to approve it at next meeting.
I was thinking of the next meeting for discussion, it would be nice if we were all looking at the same thing, so maybe, maybe the finance committee has a list.
Do you guys have a list of items and you guys are meeting next week, earlier in the week?
I haven't scheduled the meeting yet, we were gonna discuss that after, and schedule a meeting soon.
But I think one of the things you need to keep in mind, before everybody came in and asked for an increase, we already had a set budget and it was already balanced.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm all set, yeah. But just a question of, you know, for example.
And I think we're still getting our cherry sheet monies in right now, right? I mean, you did mention that there was some increase in the house budget.
Houseways and means, and you actually increased chapter seventy, which is a very good sign because I was concerned that they were gonna cut that. But there's a lot, I only have two numbers from houseways and means, and there's a dozen numbers that could change on the cherry sheet, and until we have a cherry sheet, we won't know if we can have any or part of that twenty-four thousand dollar increase.
Yeah.
We probably won't know till the day before, special time meeting.
Usually, usually it is, usually, right? We don't usually get it till June of July.
Usually, they produce it in the next week or so.
Okay.
I just thought it would be helpful to make sure that everybody's in agreement on exactly what it is that we're either deciding pointedly, we heard you, but we're not, we're not gonna be able to get that done, but we wanna carry it forward to the fall, or we heard you, thanks, or, you know, we really shouldn't be waiting for the fall on that one and do we need to try to move some other things around to make that happen for the fall town meeting? And I think we owe it to the department heads to just do that one sweep.
The thing too is we do have to approve the budget next week to get it onto the warrant.
Yeah.
So we basically be doing that, we wouldn't have, unless we had another meeting before, right before town meeting, which I don't even know if we could do that, the budget, to approve it, if we had a discussion, so we're kind of in a little bit of a pinch. But we could.
Could do it next week.
We could do it next week, we could have the discussion and approve it.
So can we make a list of?
Who the increases were?
Yeah, select board issues and then finance committee issues and then conference it out next week and just basically hash it out then and be done with it, that way we can approve it, because I think what we were trying to avoid is what we ran into at special time meeting when we had last minute vehicle requests and things like that, that you guys weren't aware of and that we weren't aware of until right before. And that, that way everything's set in advance so no last minute changes, right?
Yeah, that sounds good. So why don't we just, if I can put our list on the next week's agenda and go from there to what I have.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, if you don't mind, I know you take much better notes than I think anybody's, I'm always there. But maybe if you wouldn't mind typing it up and then we could compare it to any notes that we made, just in case there's anything missing.
Yeah, yeah, and we can give it this funnel to David.
To David.
Yeah, yeah, I think that's probably the best way to do it.
Sure.
Okay.
So finance committee, if you're gonna be meeting prior to next Wednesday, we need to be posting tomorrow because Monday's a holiday and we can't count that.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you David.
You're welcome. Give me a call.
Thank you.
May I ask the chair if you could, instead of going to the town meeting warrant, could you take sidewalk?
Yeah.
In cemetery because of the chief and.
Yeah, let's do that.
Our DPW director here.
Yep, thank you. So why don't we do sidewalk first? Did someone, where, do you wanna talk to this choice? Do you have something?
I didn't, I didn't do this, this was on the.
Wait, yeah, we asked Chris to come in.
Okay, we have Chris coming in, yes, okay, yeah, about costs.
But the chief is also involved because it involves the fines and things too, right? Are you aware of that with the sidewalk? No, well surprised. You might be, I mean, it says the police, the chief of police and the director of public works, or your designate, either department would be in charge of the fines.
So can I give a little bit of background of where?
Sure.
Yeah, go for it. So this past winter, we stopped removing snow from Route Nine, and that was a decision we made with Chris and has a board, because of damage claims and because of the mess that they created when they put in the new sidewalks. So I think last meeting, what we had talked about bringing Chris in for was to talk about the cost of continuing to clear, say, West Street, Middle Street, East Street, the historic districts, or going to a new bylaw where everybody's responsible for their own sidewalks in front of their houses.
Which, if you wanna just throw in there, we did have a bylaw in the books already.
Yeah, long, from a long time ago.
A long time ago.
And then I, I think that we're, well, I won't make any assumptions, but I know that, talking to Chris, we, we had agreed between the two of us that we should not be responsible for doing Route Nine, that's something the state should be responsible for, it's something that we should not be bearing the cost for. So whether that's on the state or on the homeowners, it's something the town, in my mind, we shouldn't be doing, but I'll let Chris kind of speak to what, what costs and what, what's involved in clearing the sidewalks in town.
Mr. Chairman, congratulations.
Thank you.
Yes, in terms of sidewalk, Mr. Chairman, it's very expensive for the town to get involved in clearing sidewalks. Apart from the cost for material and employee, when you look at the winter months, many communities make, to avoid the cost requires what the board is trying to do, but of different ordinance to whereby homeowners or property owners or business owners are made to clear sidewalks. The town is obliged to clear sidewalks around schools, public buildings, senior centers, and so, and that is because of the responsibility of the town. Thereby, we also hold the homeowners or business owners responsible where they're not, by fining them, and a very serious fine, so you find that most communities use that, thereby sidewalks are cleared for safety, sidewalks are cleared for, and then where towns that allow the public works to take that obligation, they tend to have a couple of funds to either bring in more people in the winter months, because that requires, for example, in the course of, in the case of Hadley, we cannot get to sidewalks before twenty-four forty hours because of the roads. And so that window is also a critical window for a lot of the false liabilities kids, other people, even sometimes, and people walking to the bus stop. And so the general public do not understand the constraints we have in terms of manpower, they think it is, we're supposed to do that. So, so you also have claims to the town, and so the town pays a lot of insurance claims because we don't have any legal standing to hold homeowner or business owners responsible. So that's why many communities obliged, make sure that homeowners are responsible. In terms of state roads, the same, once the ordinance is in place, it covers those properties along state roads. And where they are not, where, because the state is not, is not too good in enforcing those laws, so the local communities tend to enforce the laws. And where we don't have such laws, like in the incident of Route Nine, where we said we're not gonna plow the sidewalks, we even sent a letter to District Two. In their mind, in the priority list they have, is the list on their list, on their priority list. So except it becomes a major event where, and it becomes a political or where the press gets involved, and then that's where you see the Mass DOT response. Otherwise, it's left to the select board to give us guidance. And my recommendation is that we should have an ordinance where homeowners, business owners are responsible, and then the director of public works can be given the authority to issue settlements. If the chief of police feels that his men are tied down, because sometimes events may come up, his men may be tied down, and so I'm happy that the chief is here, I don't know if the chief wants to add some, something to that.
No, I would agree a hundred percent. My only, well, I have one suggestion that maybe when, I think a lot of this, a good point to start would be information, informational, educational, get the information out there first. I think that NICSOL, since we're gonna be doing a big push with NICSOL, might be a good place to start, to let people know this. And then the only question I guess I would have is, I think we all agree that the state would have, should have responsibility for taking care of the sidewalks on state roads. Would a town bylaw allow Hadley to fine people on state roads even though the state is responsible for sidewalks?
And I asked two or three times already, do we have any documentation from the state when they said, we gave you the sidewalks?
We didn't ask that, did we?
And no, they're within the state easement, so these are the same questions that Mike's trying to ask right now. We haven't looked at the legal issue of the, the state sidewalks on state land, which they say they turned over to town.
If, if the, if the town makes, if the town has an ordinance, especially for example, this law, a sidewalk, because we have Route Nine, the state will be, is a, is a, is a courtesy call, sitting down with the district just to inform them, this is the ordinance, they, they will not object to it, because for them to object to it means that they have to come before the select board and give the town their own plan, and they don't have personnel to do that. So, so they usually go along, the only thing is, they, they will be informed, they may have one or two contribution to it, and in the case where the, the, the object, the town can leave Route Nine to whatever the state obliged, but the, the, once it is done, we are, this is a good time for education to us before the next snow season, as the chief said. But it doesn't mean that you cannot make a regulation governing the use of the sidewalk on Route Nine.
Do we have any idea of the cost of a site, of maintaining those sidewalks?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, because it's an emergency, we bring in two guys with machine, and usually it's a time and a half, so it, it goes from a simple call from, from the police, we bring in a guy, it's four hours, call, salt is, is expensive, and so we end up just coming to take care of sidewalk, and when we are not even on the ground, you're talking about a thousand dollars easy.
Per event.
Yes, because we have to pay, our personnel's are union personnel, so we pay them time and a half. We also have to pay the on-call supervisor, because he gets a call from the police, he has to respond to bringing personnel, and then when we are plowing snow, we don't respond on time, so sometimes the time, the next time we have to respond, we may spend more hours there for an eight-hour period, and because it's sidewalk, not every machinery we have can go into that sidewalk, so safety is very important, and then time consuming, so, and because it's time consuming, it accumulates the pain, because we're dealing with personnel, so it's not, so this is a type of cost that we, we cannot justify. And then sometimes we may never finish the sidewalk because modern nature brings up another snowy event, so that's why that project is abandoned, we have to respond to the, and then we come back. Meanwhile, in the eye of the public, it looks as if we don't know what we're doing, or our professional standard is poor, but it's just because we have the same personnel we're trying to shiver at.
Yeah, 'cause it's my experience, the sidewalks in the center of town, they're plowed, plowed pretty quickly after an event and.
We tend to respond to center of town, solid town hall, the school, because we, sometimes we may want to take a guy from a route and bring him to do this, because it's the right thing to do, the town hall has to be open to the public, the school has to be open to the public too. And so, but if you look at outside this scope area, the other side, it takes time for us to get to that location. And then sometimes businesses also call us, thinking that we see our responsibility because to take, and then we have to educate them, and sometime, especially myself being a, a new personnel, they remind me that sometime in the past, they have, the public works has done that, and I keep telling them that, yes, it's possible. In the past years, in every, events have changed, salt is more expensive today, and also public works of today is not the public works of twenty years ago or thirty years ago, where you, you have a lot of individuals. Today, every, every personnel is accounted for and we also have more area to cover, more liabilities today than thirty years ago in terms of town responsibility.
So my concern is that if we pass a bylaw, or a new bylaw I should say, that says residents are responsible, I, I don't wanna put the Route Nine state imposed mess on those residents and businesses to be responsible for. I know that we have some, some businesses now, after every storm, snowstorm, do a great job of, of this past winter, even though we weren't doing the sidewalks, they were doing their own. And they were doing a good job. And so, you know, if that's something they choose to do because it brings in pedestrian traffic to their business, or it just looks more professional, then great, but I don't wanna be going after businesses and fining them for the state creating a mess on the sidewalks in front of them, because that's the issue we're having, we're having, you look at Route Nine down here by the bridge, you've got, you know, thirty-foot wide road that's being pushed onto a sidewalk, and now a homeowner's saying, what the heck am I gonna do with three feet of ice and snow? So if, if we were to do a bylaw, I would want to, you know, some, yeah, somehow exempt state routes and let, you know, make sure that stays the responsibility of Mass DOT rather than put it on homeowners. That's, that's the only thing we're having, and so if we were to create a bylaw, I just wanna make sure that's not gonna put it on that.
Another thing, Mr. Chairman, I don't know if before the. Another thing, Mr. Chairman, I don't know if before the board, before the board makes a final decision, if the board will authorize the Taran district or myself to, to invite the district to, um, head of the district to, to the board meeting to discuss this matter so that you can, you can probably hear from the state, uh, they're thinking about it before you can.
Do you think you can, do you have any relationship with them?
No, I don't.
No, okay.
If, if the, if the board authorizes, no, the Taran district. Sometimes they will show up, but at least we have a record that they were, before you make a final decision, they were given opportunity to come in to probably make the out case before the board.
Yeah. John, go ahead.
Yeah, I think this is outrageous about the state. It's in a layout, they plow the snow from the road on top of the sidewalk and they want individuals and businesses to clean it. I think this is absolutely asinine. And far as the taxpayer paying to do the sidewalks, they've paid it over the years in the town. I don't have a sidewalk, but I'm a taxpayer and still pay the DPW or whoever is doing that to plow that. Now you're going to push that onto a homeowner, say, especially the elderly, how do you expect them to either hire someone or to do it themselves? You're creating a hardship to a lot of people you don't think you are.
Yeah, I, I, I agree with you. Thank you. Jane, or Valerie had her hand up. Go ahead.
Just a quick thing, it is an article.
Yeah, it's an article.
It's an article. So, you know, people need to come, need to speak their piece. If they don't want the article, then they need to say so.
And what's the vote, is it two-thirds or is it a majority?
Majority.
Majority, okay.
Mr. Chairman, how did it get to be an article?
We put it on there, this has been a running issue.
Who did?
The select board did.
There's the trouble.
Not all the select board did. I voted against it and I'm still against it.
Good.
The taxpayer's been paying for it for 35 years, I've been working for the town. The problem was the last DPW director got rid of a piece of equipment that we cleaned the sidewalks with. And we bought this other machine and we got it into winter and found out it didn't work. That's the problem.
I don't think that's.
I maintained them, I maintained them myself a few winters when we had a lot of snow.
I don't think that's the only problem, uh, Mr. Chairman, that they might process or sell the equipment. I can come before the board to request money to get such equipment that would do a good job for sidewalks. But it's too simplistic that way. Because for example, we have, um, the state road side, uh, Route Nine, uh, we also have other sidewalks, which are local sidewalks. Some of them, uh, does not, need major repairs, so we can't even put machine in. Number two, the terms of, uh, to bring them up to code, if we have to repair the sidewalk today, we have to not only put, uh, you know, ADA style, uh, is, is, we have to put that, we also have to make sure that, uh, that, um, yeah, four feet wide because most of our sidewalks, 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 it are three feet, some areas are even smaller than three. So it's gonna, it's gonna be more expensive. Plus, we need, even if we have the machine, the number of employees we have right now in DPW with the, with the snow air, uh, area that we have to cover, we can still do the job, but the thing is that it's still going to be behind. And the board is going to get a lot of calls. I, 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 many of them will be wondering, why is DPW, 35 years ago is different. Many roads in 35 years ago were not paved roads, were not all the, the, the regulation or the legal standard or cost for liability wasn't much 35 years ago. Today it's, it's expensive.
Yeah. Valerie?
So anyway.
No.
I know, I didn't finish before he interrupted you to the chairman, okay? So, uh, originally, the state had their plans and they showed up with what they got for sidewalks right now. When the engineers came in from District Two just last two months ago or so, Chris, and I was in on a meeting with you, the engineers were there at the sidewalks, I specifically asked them for the next section, what they were going to do with sidewalks. And I guess they've already realized their mistakes because they're going with a six-foot buffer, they said, and a six-foot sidewalk for the next section of this project.
This is from?
This is going to be from.
Or Middle Street?
Yeah, well, basically from Middle Street, wherever they ended up, to South Maple Street. So they, they realized the problem. I don't know if District Two, maybe we need to get them in here and see if they plan somewhere down the line of fixing from here to the bridge because it just doesn't work the way it is. And like I said, it's a real issue whether they're responsible for the sidewalks on Route Nine in their easements. What are we going to do? Fine the state for not cleaning their sidewalks in 24 hours? I already see that coming down.
Well, and then we have people walking there too.
You can't find the state, but, but.
What do you mean you can't find the state? If it's their property and the sidewalk is on their property, then they need to maintain it and we can fine them for it.
All right.
I know we're never seeing money.
Let's move on. Valerie, go ahead.
So I just wanted to add to this. We spend a lot of time in, uh, Minnesota. And in our neighborhood in St. Paul, they have this kind of a law where all the neighbors are required to take care of their own piece of the sidewalk. And the bottom line is that in the wintertime, nobody walks on the sidewalk. Everybody walks in the street. Because the reality is that not everybody is going to, you know, fines or no fines, not everybody is going to plow their sidewalk. Or maybe somebody is sick and they can't, or maybe they plowed their sidewalk, but there's a whole lot of ice and it's very dangerous and slippery. So those of us who walk in that neighborhood, we're all walking in the street.
Yeah, that's what I'm worried about, is people walking out, you know.
But interestingly, the first year this year that they plowed the sidewalk going over the bridge.
Yes.
This is the first year they've ever done that.
DOT did that.
Yeah.
Jane?
Well, it's my understanding that the town owns the sidewalks on West Street and Middle Street. When I was a property owner there. So now you're asking the homeowners to shovel your sidewalks.
Yes.
I don't think that's right.
Yeah.
Especially on West Street where you have a lot of elderly people.
West Street, Middle Street, most of them are.
I feel like we could go on all night going back and forth on this, so I, I, I don't know, it's going to go to town meeting, it's on the warrant. We just, we'll have to settle at a town meeting and somebody can make a motion to vote and we can take a vote on it. And I don't know what else to say because we can go back and forth all night.
Mr. Chairman, how is your board? Is your board supporting this? Because I don't see no new expansion to sidewalks that were here two years ago or five years ago. Same thing. You guys used to do that, no problem, nobody said nothing. Nobody, nobody complained, nobody did nothing. Now all of a sudden now, it's a big problem.
All right, thank you, John.
And that started with the state.
Yeah, well, we are going to take a vote later on the warrant, so where we're standing, so.
Good.
Okay.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you, Chris. And do you want to do cemetery, cemetery reorganization funding?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'm back again to the board. If you recall, about two weeks ago, the board would approve the DPW reorganization. So we had to bring in the cemetery and then we come up, we came up with building and cemetery division. Uh, we also came up with the cemetery and building maintenance foreman position. And also we also requested the board to give us a skilled labor.
Thank you.
A skilled laborer position to, to assist in the, in the maintenance of the cemetery. Uh, the, the chairman of the cemetery commission was also present. He also suggested, uh, if the board would approve going out, getting a contractor to do the cemetery. But I'm here, Mr. Chairman, to, um, ask the board to approve our funding because we added some, because of these two, these positions, our budget was kind of changed. I am of the opinion to hire a, a skilled laborer who, and I also had a breakdown format where the, the skilled, the skilled laborer, um, funding half would come from cemetery, one quarter from building maintenance and one quarter from highways, snow and ice funding. So this laborer will be active for 12 months in a year plus, yeah, my experience with cemetery is just, is more than just mowing the cemetery. We also have to defi the cemetery. We have to, uh, clean, pick up leaves, sometimes even do lumbar seed. We have to do some paint work. Um, so the, so that's why I am of the opinion, and in the winter months, this skilled laborer can be put on this, on the snow route. Or as we just discussing, as a, a, somebody who can also assist us if the board decide to go on the route of we do the sidewalk. Or we also have other streets. So, so this individual, uh, in my view, on the long run, the town saves more by addressing us to fund a skilled laborer position as opposed to getting a contractor. Because in a contractor case, you have to write a contract. Now you have to stipulate how many times you want the lawn to be mowed. And anything else, anything you want the guy, individual to do, has to be written. And sometimes we cannot anticipate what may happen. For example, we may have a couple of weeds and we have a lot of tree limbs all replaced. Now it may not actually be in the contract, or it may be in the contract for him to come and mow the lawn, uh, the cemeteries 12 times in a month or 12 times a year, and we need to mow the cemetery 16 times. So it tends to be very expensive because in the, in those kind of areas, um, I think the chairman of the cemetery commission, in my view, was, was looking at it from the view of the current, uh, the way it is now right now. And we are trying to go above where the weight is right. And so that will give us a better handle with cemetery. So that is what I'm here, Mr. Chairman, because the last time the board approved, the board did not, we didn't come, the board did not give us a specific approval, either to go contract or to give us a skilled labor.
Yeah, it seemed like the contracted number went up pretty substantially for this year. Is that, what's?
Yes, it went up because the current, the weight is now currently, they had about eighteen thousand dollars. And, uh, we also found that that eighteen thousand dollars was, if to do it right, that, that number, it doesn't make any, it doesn't bring any, it doesn't make any value. Uh, so now that the department, the DPW is handling the cemetery and we're trying to bring it up to a regulation and to bring it up to where it should be, it's one of the reasons why if we go, if we beat that, the contract is going to be very expensive compared to what we have right now.
Yeah.
And we are not, we also cannot control the vendor outside the, the limit of the, of the scope of the contract. But with a skilled laborer, we have a 12-month obligation to, to do many of these.
Yeah, I mean, I like the i, option of having more DPW staff, I can talk amongst the board, but I, I think we have to talk about it because it's, increases the overall budget and we haven't made any decisions on the overall budget yet.
My only concern is that, uh, DPW on the priority list for budgeting is what, in next year or the year after. And so, um, I don't know if we can do a, a one-year contract or a two-year contract or whatever in the meantime before we, because I know.
Hold off one more year on this?
Yeah, because we've got so many other things that are.
And we talked about the foreman position already.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I'm concerned with, is just where's, where are we going to, how are we going to afford all this right now? But that's a concern, yeah.
There is a, why, the town vision gave us this, this obligation. And for DPW to do it right, Mr. Chairman, this is why it's going to cost this money because up to this point, it wasn't done, uh, in my view, it, uh, it wasn't done, uh, up to what I, up to spec or up to law or up to, or the town was not protected, even without eighteen thousand dollars. And so there was, now we're trying to make sure that the town is protected. And also to put it in a, in the right way it should be. Uh, so that's just why this, this little, I call it, it's a, it's a minimal increase in the sense that we're not asking the town to give us money for equipment at this first phase. We can also use highway equipment here and there as opposed to where, if we had come to say, okay, as a new division, we need a couple of trucks or a couple of, uh, VAC truck, tobacco leaves or more, now we have those today.
Chris, isn't, aren't you asking for option B, which is ninety-seven thousand dollars?
Yes.
You didn't, you didn't just say minimal next to ninety-seven thousand, did you?
How much are we paying right now?
The, if you, if you look at it, it's, um, we have, um, the foreman position, which we, most of the foreman, foreman position money is already in our budget.
Right.
Because of the building maintenance. So the, the way we, we have zero to, to, not is the skilled labor. And then the, then if you add the, um, benefits, that's when it gets to that ninety-seven thousand.
Right, right, yeah.
So you're adding the benefits in and you're taking one-third, one-third, one-third from water and sewer again. And then the next thing you know, we're going to be a reasonable.
No, that's not, that's not, that's not for the labor, that's not, that's not the labor. For the labor for cemetery, we're taking half, half of his salary goes to cemetery, one quarter to building and maintenance and one quarter to highway, snow and ice.
So I'm leaning toward contract or a short-term contract until the budget priority comes around for DPW just because we've, you know, we hired a new person.
That's what we get and we've got, you know. I know, yeah, yeah. Like I said, yeah, I, I think these are great, good ideas and I think they're good-looking for it, I just don't know where we're, how we're going to get the money for it. That's the big thing.
If, if the board authorizes to go out for B, for contract, then we will do that because we want to be able to get somebody in place before.
Established, yes.
Is, uh, does anybody, I don't have the list, or when does DPW come up?
Next year.
Next year?
Sure.
Next year, okay.
FY21. So can we do a?
Contract.
One-year contract?
At least that's all they are anyway. They go year by year.
Yeah, they go year by year.
Yeah, the maintenance contract.
So let's go out.
July 1st to June 30th, yeah, they just go year by year.
Make a motion.
I'll make, I'll make a motion that we effectively stay the course with contracting this out for the coming fiscal year, but with a commitment to readdress this as part of the overall staffing when we look at DPW in 2021.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I have a quick question. The foreman position, the board agrees that we should, uh, we should establish that position and finance, fund it for this FY20?
I believe based on your, that, that PowerPoint slide, we voted.
Yes.
And correct me if I'm wrong, we voted in favor of the, I'm sorry, I was just trying to pull it up so I can see it.
Cemetery foreman, yeah, the board.
The cemetery foreman and building maintenance foreman.
Yes.
We approved the DPW general foreman.
Also.
If we are able to find the funding.
Funding, yes, correct.
Yes. So there, we, we did approve both, it was just finding the resources to fund all those.
My understanding is that the foreman can be absorbed in the current budget.
Yes, but the cemetery foreman.
And I.
And that's posted.
Right, realistically, the, um, what was that, our position?
The DPW general?
Yeah, the DPW general, we're not going to have the money to do it this, this time around.
No, we'd look at it at the earliest in the fall.
Yeah, so maybe fall time, but otherwise it's, basically we authorized the reorganization, but we don't have the money.
Yeah, yeah, I agree, the board, that's what the board said, if there's money, we'll fund a general foreman. But I'm just focusing on the building and cemetery foreman. Because if we go contract, he or she will be the one to help to administer that contract.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And I think it's a great growth area for next year.
So is his direction right now, because now I'm confused, are you going to, are we directing him to hire a cemetery foreman at this point to oversee the contractual services? Or is that the foreman, um, that's vacate, vacate, vacated right now at this point, are we filling that position, um, to oversee that at this point?
Let me pull up the organization.
Yeah, so we're missing a foreman, correct?
Correct, in building, maintenance and cemetery department, yeah.
Right, but right now I think a position with the DPW is open, correct?
The DPW one, I would think. The DPW one, I would think would be more important than the cemetery one right now, I thought that's what you guys voted on.
Well, it's building, maintenance, yeah, yeah.
So I think the DPW general foreman that's shown in the chart, that, that's what we said, go ahead and hire, and it's posted, right? The DPW general foreman is posted right now?
No, it's not posted, he said if we have money.
I thought that one was the one if we had money.
Money.
But the building, maintenance.
The field superintendent.
We, we, we have a candidate who, uh,
Oh, field superintendent.
I was talking to the town administrator this week tomorrow, to, to give us a query. We have an individual we want to bring before, to take a check. Yeah, we have, we interviewed this individual yesterday, that's a tall interview. And, um, we are going through the, um, his references right now. And we'll be bringing him for a query check. But, uh, that, that's the, the field superintendent, that is the one we have. That is funded, it's already, the money is in the budget.
So perhaps in the fall, we can fund a half-year of a DPW general foreman.
Right.
But right now we.
But right now we can't.
But right now we can't, yeah.
But, but, but is the board authorized me to go ahead and fill the building maintenance cemetery foreman position? I know the board approved it last time, we have the money, we have the money to fill it, because
Yeah.
of the building maintenance, um, money is in the budget, and then, but.
That, that, that was gonna be approved in this, in twenty-twenty budget, correct? Yeah, so once that budget is approved, if that's available, yes, right?
David, is that, so right now, we can cover that in the existing budget as far as the building, maintenance, cemetery foreman?
Yeah, FY twenty.
Cemetery foreman?
Yeah.
Okay.
Good, I don't think we need any other votes on that. Correct.
Alright, so, so did the board authorize me to go ahead one year before contract?
The contract.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
And then, we'll have to, you know, we'll be discussing that, because we have the twelve thousand, I think, I don't know.
Yes, that's what I'm looking at the budget. There are many amount, uh, when I appear before the board.
Yeah.
We requested that if the board can give us some of the money that the town administrator took, we have a twelve thousand five hundred. We also have various five thousand from, that we were requesting.
Yeah.
I, I know the board has not many decisions.
And that's what we're gonna discuss next week, is those issues, yes. Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Alright.
Marijuana. Are you going to put marijuana?
Dull-use marijuana license process?
I thought you were just discussing, uh, actual vendors. I can't advocate for.
The use of it.
Have you read this?
The bylaw?
That, that, how about the proposal for, um, to, to join a joint, uh, host community agreement?
Well, I, yeah, I actually assisted with, with some of the, uh, the, the last one. So I have some experience and some knowledge, I don't know what the new ones look like, if they look the same or not.
This is a certain RFP to go out, you know, we put this RFP out, I guess we're jumping into it, put the RFP out, and then people would bid on it, so to speak, and put an application together towards that, maybe David can.
Yeah, so we have a, we have a by, we have two bylaws on the warrant. Uh, the first one has to do with the public consumption of cannabis. Now, the planning board wrote this, you've reviewed it, you've approved it. I, on town meeting floor, the planning board is very likely, like they did the last time, to turn to the select board and say, oh no, it's your article. Why don't you speak to it? So, we, we wanna make sure that we're conversant with that particular article. The other is a dynamic that's happening right now with, uh, the anticipation that we will pass, either we will pass a zoning bylaw having to do with the dull-use marijuana, or we will not, and then the moratorium will expire. It will not be extended. So the vendors, the potential vendors are, are contacting me, and there have been four already.
I know.
Saying, we want to negotiate with you for a host community agreement, so that we can get in line early in Boston, in order to get our, our licenses in order, so that we can establish a business in the town of Hadley. My question to the board is, is that we have two licenses to give out, do we wanna give it out as easy as first come, first served? Or do we want to think about giving it out to the vendor who has the most to offer for the town of Hadley?
I, I'm for the latter, I think that, uh, the discretion of the board should be used to determine who's the best fit for the town, and when we can get out of there, because, um, first in line isn't necessarily the best.
Yeah, and just a note, I don't know if you guys have read the complete bylaw that's in the warrant, but it says, complete applications for special permits and site plan approvals for marijuana establishments will be processed in the order they are filed with the town, however.
So it's kind of first come, first.
Yeah, that's first come, first served in our bylaw, but the caveats are, is a copy of an approved host community agreement. So that's something they have to have with the select board, correct, before they can apply for the special permit, so that's kind of where we have the leverage as the board to allow them to establish a business or not.
I guess my concern is, is, is there a way that we can do this, where we put a deadline for people to put in their packages to, for the town?
So remind them more.
Right, so remind them up, and then say, okay, that's it, no more, no one else can, can apply, we'll have a narrow window of time. And that way, we can objectively look at the pa- the packages and choose the best packages.
Or none, if we want, yeah, yeah.
Or it has to be a roll line.
Yeah, and that way, it's completely up to our discretion, and that way, we can get the best fit for the town.
That's the RFP that I've put together for you, is, uh, like, patterned it off the towns of Winston and Tyningsboro. This is an unusual approach, and will be unfamiliar to the vendors of the dull-use marijuana. But it, I think it serves the best interest of the town, because we're asking for more information in this RFP than the state will ask for. Particularly having to do with finances, and we don't wanna be in a situation where we give a license out to a vendor who simply does not have the financial structure to carry forward the plan. And then not being able to give that license to someone deserving.
I mean, personally, I feel like we only have two of these to offer, we need the best possible candidates, we don't just wanna give first come, first serve, and then find, you know, behind several months.
Look at Northampton, how one of them was a disaster that started off in just a mass chaos with having tons of police details and crowds and stuff like that, and then some of the other communities, how they've done very well, and very orderly, that's my concern, is I don't wanna have a mess on our hands to.
And Chief Mason, you?
Does, does the RFP require that, or request that the person filing, uh, design their own community host agreement, or is there room for negotiation in that?
There's room for negotiations, but it, uh, but it'll be required, there's a couple of
Minimal requirements, yeah.
Features of the state law, one of which is the host community agreement can be for no more than five years, although the law is silent about renewals, so we wanna tease that out of them, is so, how are you going to carry your payments to the town beyond the five years? And the other is, how are you gonna structure the host community agreement, so that we don't have to do the auditing process that, uh, limits us to charging no more than three percent of our actual costs, that's a big burden for a small community to absorb. So put it on them to do that, and then everything else can be a matter of negotiation, but try to make this as easy for us.
Possible, so when you lay these out in front of you, you'll be able to see basically what they're, what they're offering.
And, and some of them, a couple of them are well-established already anyway, that probably have contacted you, so I, I, I think you're gonna, I think we're gonna have a wide variety of offers
Yeah.
to look at.
The only, the one question I had is, if we do, if we're looking for these RFPs, are, is there any confidential proportions versus public portions as far as releasing this information, and could that prevent?
It's all public.
It's all public, yeah. I just don't know if that will prevent people from applying because of that reason.
Well, I think, I think that that's something to think about, because this is a new and different process that most people will not be familiar with, and so that could act as a, as a deterrent, because we're asking for a lot of work here, with no guarantee that they're gonna get the license at the other end. But I think, I think that's a better route to go than to just say first come, first served.
So, if, if we have two licenses to give out, and let's just say we get, you know, five submissions of a packet, and we decide that, nah, they're not really what we're looking for, by not giving out any licenses until we can, I guess, uh, put out a new RFP, are we imposing some sort, some sort of moratorium where we're gonna get in trouble? Alright, do we have to give out the licenses, or can we take our time through this process and take as long as it needs to to find the right fit?
In the RFP, you have the absolute right not to accept any of the proposals. Within the RFP, you have objective criteria that you can, uh, decide that one or more proposals are unacceptable.
It's just like we hired the OPMs or whatever, similar criteria.
Yeah, so long, so long as we stick to a process, we should be fine.
But I'm just saying, since the moratorium's not gonna exist anymore, are we gonna get in trouble with, say, the state or somebody else by not issuing, by taking our sweet, because, let's just say, and I'm not advocating for this, but if it takes us a year to find the right fit, is the state gonna come after us and say, you guys are not issuing the licenses you were supposed to be?
That's possible, that is a possibility.
But if we have a rating system, go ahead.
I mean, right, I think they'd be more concerned if we were just like, yeah, I don't like that blue shirt. I mean, and that's not the case, we have criteria.
Yeah.
Well, we'll see why it wouldn't bear similarity to liquor licenses, as long as you're not arbitrarily refusing just to show that we just don't want these businesses in town.
Right.
I don't see why you can't.
And honestly, this is a multi-million dollar business, most likely, uh, having to fill out an RFP like this to establish it, doesn't seem like we're asking too much of those people. Yeah, I mean, it's a long process you're go, you're involved with, so.
So I have not shared this RFP with you, so I'll be happy to do so, you and I can just review it.
Yeah, because I think there was some security and public safety elements on there, so.
I'm aware, the bylaw does, does require certain security.
It requires them to be willing to meet with you and all that other stuff, too.
It actually has a lot of, of board health things in here also, that, you know, they definitely should oversee as the, uh, what their plans are for renewable energy plan, water management plan. Again, that involves our DPW water management, how much water are they gonna be using, odor control, neighbors, uh, things of that nature, so there's, you know, a multitude of, um, certainly, I, I think this is going to be probably the biggest part of our town meeting, is going to be the topic of the marijuana use in the bylaws.
So can I make a motion that we pursue the RFP avenue of issuing, uh, marijuana licenses, subject to the board having the discretion to, uh, not issue or issue as we see fit?
I'll second that, and encourage a copy of this to go to public safety as well as support.
Yeah, for sure.
So they're aware of it ahead of time.
Thank you for the clarification on the process, now we can answer the telephone.
Yeah. Perfect.
Any further discussion?
Well, I mean, if, and if board of health or, uh, safety's got any issues with it, we need to address them also.
Do, do we wanna have anything before we release this to the public, what do we want? Or with this vote, are we able, is David able to give this to prospective vendors?
This is just a draft, right?
The draft.
This is a draft, so I need to tighten it up, um, and I'll report back to the select board when I.
I, I would like the RFP looked over by our lawyers, I think.
Council.
Council, town council, before we give it out to anybody, I think if you tighten it up, it should go to them, just to make sure.
Okay.
Sounds good.
So do we wanna modify the motion at all, that we have a final approval, or?
Yeah, we need a final.
Yeah, I'm just, I wanted to vote that we go this, this route here, with the RFP, rather than a first come, first served. And that we have the sole discretion to issue or not issue.
Yeah, we're, we're defining the process.
Okay, yeah. Alright, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. As it relates to the other bylaw, just really quickly, you may want to get the information out there that this, this bylaw that was written by the planning board, it already exists. So that probably should be one of your talking points, but can say it now on camera, it is already a bylaw here in Hadley, they just, went out with, I think, I believe they got it from Pioneer Valley Planning Commission, a bylaw that most other communities are using now and have adopted since the recreational marijuana, um, changes. So all it is, is just better language, more, um, up-to-date information, so.
And didn't they say too at the planning board that, that it really needs to be passed? Because it's already something that's in place.
Moratorium is up in July, correct?
June first.
June first.
That's what David said, that it'd be basically wide open if, if we didn't pass it, right?
So, I mean, they're really encouraging that it does pass.
Yeah.
Wherever you can buy a gummy bear right now, you can buy the dull-use marijuana if you don't have the zoning bylaw in place.
Okay.
Need some public information about that.
Yeah.
Definitely. Alright, thank you. Do, can you take, so, Jane, so she could, any senior updates?
Yeah, that's what I was gonna do, do we want to use senior center updates, thank you? What's, sorry, go ahead, Jane.
Senior Center is moving along, there is a fence, if you haven't noticed, and a porta potty. But it's locked, so you can't use it. And they're doing the, um, erosion control today and tomorrow, and they are meeting with Conservation Commission Friday morning, and to get their approval, and then the big machines come in on Monday, and they'll start grading.
And, uh, we're hoping to break ground and start excavating foundations the following week, the twenty-second, so we're hoping to have the building permit next Friday, a week from Friday, to be able to proceed.
And the building committee is meeting in two weeks, and we are going to have a date for you then for the grand opening ceremonies, or the groundbreaking ceremonies, or whatever you call it, and we're also gonna try and figure out where we wanna put the sign. Because most, most construction projects, you see the sign in the site. In this project, that's not a possibility, to see the sign, you have to be behind the hooker school. If you put it in front of this hooker school, you can't see the site, so it's something the building committee's gonna work on.
So realistically, with a thirty-day notice, you're probably talking about the end of May-ish time period, early June.
Yeah, and we were talking, what do we wanna kinda ha, what kind of setting do we wanna have it, and what in the background, you know, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, again, how many chairs?
Yeah.
And how many officials do we really want to invite? I mean, I made up a quick list, it looks like a hundred people by the time you get all the dignitaries that normally get invited to things like the governor and the governor's wife, and the assistant lieutenant governor, and, you know, elder affairs, and the council on agings, and all the local council on aging directors, and all the Hadley officials, and all, yeah, there's a lot of people there.
Yeah.
And then there are the town people who will want to go.
Alright. Library?
Uh, so library, we will be going out to bid on April twenty-fourth. Um, the trustees, my understanding is, last night agreed, and voted, voted on, and agreed to the ordering of the alternates. So that was kind of the remaining item before, um, it goes out to bid, so April twenty-fourth, um, next number of weeks for the bids to be returned, uh, believe the last week of May is when they expect to be doing that bid opening, um, and then hopefully we'll be off and running beginning of June, and have a date for the beginning of demolition. So that'll be part of the bid.
And, and just one more thing, I was looking at my notes about the senior centers, the Memorial Day Parade. There's some talks in the works of where that's going to be.
Parking and.
Jane Backstage is working on an alternative plan.
So I think Gary's gonna.
Gary was in contact with her too, so.
He seems to be right. The Legion informed, but the site is no longer available.
We can use the front of the Legion and part of Route Nine, and we could probably, they were talking about using Middle Street.
Or East Street.
Or East Street. Like in Northampton, we always used to line up like, uh, Triangle Street and Forest, and then all come out from there, we could do that down here.
Yeah, we can do that at East Street. Yeah, we can do that at East Street.
About Hopkins and just coming up behind Russell School and just starting at the center of town rather than the Legion.
Oh, that'd be such a short parade. The Legion wouldn't like that.
See what I'm saying?
Yeah, they want to go by the Legion, right?
The Legion wants to be involved.
Yeah.
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 No, I think the north end, north of Route 9 on East Street is the place to.
They could stop traffic there.
Yeah, I mean, we came all the way from Mill Valley, Route 300, so.
Oh, right, yeah, that's right.
Yep, we did. Okay, we'll work on that.
Fire?
Fire substation.
No, I'm done.
We go again before the planning board on the 16th, next Tuesday night. And we'll go from there and see how that goes.
My understanding is that they're with the election. And the fact that one of the sitting members of the planning board is no longer there, that for these, some of these projects that are in the middle of hearings, they may have to rethink how those happen with a new member on board. I don't know if anybody saw, I think Jim Maximowski was in contact with Joel Bard on the issue. So, so just mentioning that, that there may be.
But I have to reopen them.
I think there may be some delays.
The email that we just got in this meeting is that says the hearings have to start from scratch for the public hearing process according to Joel Bard.
I mean, they can move it along, of course, but they have to go through legal motions.
Can I bring up the line painting in this portion?
Sure.
So the Legion has asked that we stripe their parking lot, paint the parking spots. Because now that the fencing is up, they're a little bit more restricted on what area they can use for events and people park and take up three spots and it's inefficient. So we have the $75,000 that we agreed to. It was requested that we paint those lines now rather than later. And I said I would bring it and ask that question with the understanding that that would count against their $75,000. So I don't know if there's any concerns or.
Who approached you?
Steve Devine.
And do we know that that was an official request?
It's not the commander.
I was just wondering, was it come from the commander or?
It wasn't from the commander, but it was.
Let me have, let me have a conversation with Commander Wood, because, because we're supposed to be, that's supposed to be, and, and he knew that Phil Palumbo was supposed to be involved with all this, and I'm sure that Richie would have called me. I'll call him. Let me call him and see.
I think the issue is that painting the lines and then digging up to do the underground and repaving is just a redundancy and a waste of money.
Well, because if the parking lot's going to be paved, then it'll be needed to be lined.
This is going to be their last Wednesday night dinner coming up next week. They won't have one in May. So next week will be their last monthly dinner. So let me, let me call him tomorrow.
Can we, if we need to take a vote, can we vote pending your conversation with them so that way if that's what they really want done, it can be, get underway?
As long as they recognize that.
Right, it's counting against their.
It's counting against.
Who's going to do it?
The budget.
And we're just standing by, they wouldn't just go out there with a.
Spray can.
Yeah.
Again, I will call and let you know. I'll call him tomorrow.
We do have a meeting next week.
Yeah, we have a meeting. It's Wednesday.
And you said, when is their dinner?
Wednesday.
It is on Wednesday.
On the 17th, not the 24th.
17th. It's the third Wednesday of every month.
Okay, right, I just looked at your monster.
Okay. Those are those updates. Town meeting warrant reviewed. Thank you, Jane. Where did we leave off, David?
There are only a couple of articles left for the, for the select board to comment on. Articles eight and nine are the budget. We're still working on that. Article 15, the land preservation for Shala. There's two components to that article 14, which is CPA. Don't typically comment on this. But 15 is non-CPA related funding of $150,000. That's coming out of TDR, Transfer Development Rights and Conservation Land Trust.
Any concerns about? Anything unusual about this property compared to anything else we've ever approved?
No, it's, it's good land up in the north end of town, which is one of the target areas for CPA APRs. Without the additional $50,000, the CPA money is not enough to affect an APR, so. Kind of showing up a waste there.
So is that our $150,000 we're paying towards this?
Yes, but that comes out of TDR and Conservation Land Trust.
And how much does it?
And is it in, is it in APR now?
It's not in APR right now. $56,590 from TDR and $93,410 from Conservation Land Fund.
So why are we paying for this?
Why are you paying for it? It's so that you can, the town can get property into APR and permanently protected.
Yeah, it's just a percentage, right?
And who's it?
It's our share.
But it, but usually, don't we usually have the balance of the APR of knowing what their share is going to be?
That's what I was, I was trying to figure out, the sharing.
Yes.
Yeah, this doesn't seem right here.
Typically, it's 90/10, so the count town kicks in 10% and the state kicks in 90%.
Yeah.
Right, so why are we picking up such a big percentage of this one?
Did they add more land to it? Is there another parcel or?
This would be approximately 10% of the entire development rights.
We have, but the article before, 14, is $210,000 out of APR for what looks like the same property.
That's right, because with CPA, CPA demands a match. And CPA does not want to have all the money in one article. They want to keep their articles separate from, and from the matching article.
Did Conservation recommend this?
Yes.
From Conservation, and CPA recommended it.
Yep.
And TDR, is that a, what's the balance in that account or is that?
TDR is $77,363.60.
After the 150?
No, this is the total balance right now. You will pretty much wipe it out.
Using the whole thing.
Yeah.
Because there's another article.
So is that, when does that get replenished?
But that is what TDR is for, so, or things like that. So and then the next development project that comes.
Oh, next development, yeah.
Same thing, 16 split between the two also, 16 and 17.
Yeah, 16 and 17 is the need bylaw. The first part is CPA funding and the land preservation is the non-CPA funding.
And that's in the center of town, that's off of East Street?
Yep.
Behind, behind too, no?
Yeah.
Runs the Butts Bim Bims property?
All right, the Butts Bim Bims, the Butts Lane 6, and the Butts Young Men's Club.
In Waskevich.
Yeah, Jenny Waskevich, yeah.
Yeah.
Jenny, Kristic.
Kristic, yeah. And so this goes into preservation too?
Yep.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve Article 15.
Second.
14 and 15.
Might as well do them all.
Yeah.
Well, I thought we didn't vote on the CPA one.
You can if you want, typically.
15 and 17.
Yeah, I mean, we can recommend it, it's.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And that's for both 15 and 17.
Okay, sidewalk is bylaw. That's something that's still under consideration.
Is there any way on that to get some type of response? Because I think we really need it from the state. I mean, we really should have something from them. I mean.
I'm worried we don't have enough information.
I said, I need more information from the state and I would like the young council to take a look at it.
I mean.
Where's the liability going to lay?
Can we pass over it until the fall?
And I feel like this is going to just be, I mean, we saw tonight, this is a heated way to, to.
This is going to be a whole night.
Fire up debate and, yeah.
And so the issue we're going to have is.
It's coming up again next winter.
Right, so I mean, in reality, it's not going to go into effect until 20, summer of 2020 or something like that, you know?
Well, we're going to be up against it again, down at the other end with people walking from Greenleaf to the mall. You know, and keeping that snow, then every time they plow, it's back up on there.
Reality is, they're not going to give us a response. I mean, they ignore everything we send to them, so.
I, I think District 2 coming here and having this discussion, if they're going to make wider passes and make it accessible for a pickup truck to go down and maintain, and that, that changes, that's a whole different story, you know?
Yeah, I'd like to wait.
When, when you got a three or four-foot sidewalk and we don't have the equipment to maintain it, you know, it makes a big difference.
Can we, can we make a motion to get the state in here?
Make a motion, yes.
Summon the.
I'd like, yeah.
We're going to wait, they're having a hearing next week about the Bay Road Bridge. Maybe we can approach them.
Tell them they're on the agenda for both.
Yeah.
So the state's policy is not to plow sidewalks that they've built. I've told them that it's an unfounded liability and they said, yep, it is.
Well, they didn't pass that torch to us.
So I guess the question is.
We didn't accept it.
Is it legally our response, or is the, does the liability fall on us if we don't clear it despite it being on the state layout? So can we get a clarification from council on that?
Yeah, I vote.
And if there is no liability, then why should we do it?
If there's no liability and the state's not going to claim responsibility for it, then we don't need to plow.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
Sounds like a plan.
And then we'll plan on passing over this until we, okay, we have enough information.
So does make a motion to.
There's a new District 2 director, so I think if we bring him in and talk to him, and if, if they're truly going to make adjustments to this next section of Route 9 that they're going to do, then maybe somewhere down the line, they can make a plan of correcting through the center of town here to the bridge. You know, it, it's an option.
So I'm going to make a motion.
But they didn't really show any, any.
Love.
Any, any cure in the new part they put in from the Amherst line to malls.
They're going to make a motion that we move, pass over this agenda item or remove it, or whatever we're doing, removing it or passing over.
Taking it off the warrant?
Yeah, so we're going to take it off the warrant and put a placeholder on the fall.
Yeah, I think we already voted to pass, leave it on and pass over it, but take it off.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, so number 23 is done. Number 27, this is the general bylaw for adult-use marijuana public consumption. This modifies some bylaw that's already on the books and makes it more enforceable. This is the one that Chief Mason was just talking about. This is not a planning board article.
Whose is it?
Well, they wrote it, but they're not going to, they're not going to defend it on the town meeting floor.
That's sweet.
Okay. And just remember, next week, we're going to assign who is speaking to what amendment, so.
Should we hold on voting on this one until I honestly haven't, like, read this verbatim?
Sure.
If we're going to have to speak to it.
And I.
Are we also okay with that?
Yeah.
Waiting out of.
They've, they've made a bylaw.
I mean, I, I'm worried about somebody saying, well, there's nothing in here about growing outside, and then what are we supposed to say?
Exactly, so we should have a chance to conference with the planning board before we vote.
And maybe they can.
On both of them.
Maybe they can change their mind and they'll speak on it since they wrote it.
So, and the planning board's going to speak on 28, correct?
Yep. All right, that's all I had.
Sounds good to me.
More agenda item, Russell?
I think it was just the town administrator or was there a more thing?
There's a new agenda item, public auction.
Oh, oh, yeah, that's right. That, sorry, my computer isn't.
Are we going to waive the fee for the auction permit? I make a motion that we waive the fee for the auction permit for the senior center, or council on aging auction to be held Wednesday, April 24th at 10:00 a.m.
Second. All, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then, last thing, town administrator report? Anything we didn't discuss there, David?
Covered a lot of the territory already in this meeting and we had an update last week, but just to touch on the classification compensation plan. Conducted interviews on Monday and Wednesday, did an orientation on Tuesday. That project is going well. There was some discussion about the reaction from the department heads at the department head meeting. I shared that with the consultant, so. Seems like that's moving forward. Just skipping through the stuff that we haven't, that we have talked about already. Town meeting all the time, all the time at this point. In the long-term projects, the Greenfield anaerobic digester, there's been a discussion about how best to coordinate many towns that would participate in hauling their sludge from their wastewater treatment plants to the anaerobic digester, which still has yet to be, to be built in Greenfield. Originally, people were talking about an inter-ministerial agreement that would bring a dozen towns together. The issue is, is that the towns have range in, in wealth quite a lot. And they were hoping to get a loan from the USDA for this project. Communities like Hadley will not qualify for those loans because we're just too affluent. So now they're talking about putting together a separate legal entity to manage the project under limited liability corporation rules. This is a great opportunity, the anaerobic digester is a great opportunity for us to control our sludge hauling costs and disposal costs. So we definitely want to pay attention to this project, but I think we need to be really careful about joining some sort of multi-town, limited liability corporation. So we need to know what this means and we need to be clear about the obligations that might arise in the future on intended consequences. So we'll bring people in to talk to the board about what this looks like, and this has been developed a little bit further.
A little bit more on that. Three weeks ago now, I went to Fort Devens for a wastewater class. And Springfield's still looking into this also, and they're really interested in putting a digester in down there.
So it might be another option.
And they, they really want to go regionalize, but their biggest thing is they need a little bit of help from the communities that are interested in it to approach the state for grant funding. And, and the state was behind putting a digester in at the University of Massachusetts. So I don't know why they wouldn't, to help Western Mass out, the four counties out here, why they wouldn't take into consideration Springfield's plan or offer. So some way, somehow, we need to speak with our representatives and get them involved along with the other representatives in the four-county area and, and somehow move this along. I mean, if, if there's a bigger picture out there and we can save a little bit more money, then I would say we would be all before it, but.
Yeah, I think it's, whether it's Greenfield or Springfield, I think it's something that we should commit to pursuing based on the fact that it can save us a lot of money and.
Just in trucking.
Yeah, and it's the environmental friendly way to get rid of it rather than put it in the landfill. But I definitely don't want to commit to, you know, liabilities that might or might not arise from the project, so, yeah.
All right, so the budget is coming together, the town meeting is coming together. We have a number of community events coming up. April 13th is the rabies clinic. April 18th, the Mass Department of Transportation is going to hold a public hearing in this room. 6 o'clock, talk about the Bay Road Bridge replacement project. On April 24th, there's the auction of the senior center contents, starting at 10:00 a.m. And we'll work on getting a banner on the fence. Public forum on the annual town meeting warrant on April 25th. April 27th, Hadley Mothers Club has a recycling event. May 2nd is annual town meeting at Hopkins Academy.
Any other announcements?
I have one.
I have one. Sixth grade fundraiser, ducking, say that clearly, ducks. If you wanna make a $10 donation and have ducks appear on somebody's lawn in the dead of night and to surprise someone, you can email hadley2025ducks@gmail.com, as in classes 2025. And it was done to us, we did it to several other people already, so kinda cool to wake up and see a whole bunch of big rubber duckies spread across your lawn.
So they delivered to Greenfield?
I don't know about Greenfield. You gotta pay extra for the right donation, I'm sure you will.
There you go.
Um, I just wanted to say thank you to the 1,240-some-odd people that, not that they're out, 1,241, I think, people that came out to vote in this election and tell the other 2,600 voters that are registered that you don't know what you're missing.
Yeah.
Lots of rain and coldness.
Lots of rain.
Like you get your car to get there, run inside.
I just have one announcement tonight, is the passing of Joyce West. Our condolences to her family, her husband Art, and children, and grandchildren, and all her friends and family. She certainly was a presence in our town for many years on school committee and finance committee, and a big supporter of 4H, having ran many 4H clubs, and she was running, I don't know how she ever did what she did all those years, and taking care of the farm, and always baking something, and she ran Booster Club for a while, they, you know, there was just so many things that she had her hand in. So certainly will be missed by many people, so our condolences to everybody.
And I don't know if it's something about the name Joyce, but you never had to wonder where you stood.
No, you did not.
Which is a good thing.
When we ran for school committee, the slogan was, "The Joices Were The Choices." So that was for a couple of our election terms, so certainly will be missed. Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, or...
I don't know, I don't know if it's appropriate or not, but I'd like to...
Uh-oh.
If it starts with that.
Motion to adjourn.
No, I don't know whether to thank the people for voting for me, or thank them for three more years of this. But I, I appreciate everybody coming out for the people who did and, and voted and did their part in our community, so.
Their right to vote.
Their right to vote, exactly.
For participating. You know, if you don't vote, then, you know, you don't, you don't have a chance to say your say, and I think it's important, no matter how you voted.
All right, motion to adjourn. All those, what do we get, roll call at the end?
No.
All of those in favor?
All in favor.
Aye, aye, thank you.
Thank you.
I'll get it.